The United States of America and through the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda is considered amended because of unnecessary leave of actions where the council will be addressed. The agenda can be amended by proper motion. Business from the floor is welcome and allotted for on our agenda. When comments from the floor are made, they must first be recognized by the mayor, the second statement, name and address for the record, and third you'll have one more than three minutes to state your comment of concern. There's copies of the agenda available at the back table and you can swing your cellphones off. Thank you.
And your microphones on. All right. I think a motion to approve or amend the meeting agenda for tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would move that I'd like to see under consent agenda 1.6, the RCA for the farmer's market, move to council item B.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I would also like to take 1.5 out to make a seat for discussion.
I think hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve as amended?
Mayor, I moved that we accept and move as the agenda is amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Lieutenant. You're up.
Pretty much right on time now. I have orders. Good evening, everyone. Just a brief overview of the sheriff's office activity in the city of now then for April of 2017. During the month, sheriff's deputies responded to 110 calls for service here in the city. A few noteworthy calls of service for service I wanted to point out. On April 2nd, deputies responded to a damage to property report in the 6700 block of 207th Avenue and also in the 21100 block of Massalt Street, North Webster. And at both of the locations, some graffiti painted on driveways and on different vehicles in the location. There were also other mischievous things that went on besides the criminal damage to property, but we normally don't see people spray painting vehicles. Sometimes you see the mischief and whatnot, but right now they're working on some suspects, but there's no solid leads in that case. But it was an interesting thing to happen fairly close to each other and something like that.
Were the circumstances similar at both locations?
Yes. Yeah, so it was the deputies reading the reports and whatnot, it was pretty, the deputies were pretty convinced that they were connected just based on what was found at both places and what was done at both places, so, and to be in the close proximity that they were. Then on the 6th, a burglar was reported here in the 19900 block of Iguana Street. Several storage units at the location were entered and items were taken. They are working on some suspects. They've got some unidentified suspects that they're trying to track down, some vehicle descriptions and whatnot, so we'll see. Hopefully, we can get some tips and get some other information that would lead us to the identity of the suspects. And then on the 11th, a damage to property incident was reported in the area of 211th and Tiger Street. A vehicle had entered a field in that area and was driving around doing donuts, digging up the field. Some vague suspect information was given to the deputy about a possible location and maybe the identity of somebody. The deputy was able to track down, find the location where the vehicle had been and then was able to identify the suspect and ultimately got him to admit to doing it, cited him for recreational vehicle trespassing. The owner didn't want him charged with damaging the property, but wanted the recreational vehicle trespass, so a little bit of a penalty for doing that, but not, nothing overly severe. And it helped address what the owner was wanting to address. And then again with the warm weather, just a reminder for folks that people are out and about walking now. If you've got, if you've got, not only are they out and about walking and you've got to be careful for them when you're driving, looking for pedestrians and bicycles, but also keeping your stuff, your possessions locked up, your outbuildings locked, and vehicles free of easy pickings for people that are out and about. We did have a theft from vehicle over the, during the month in the 18400 block of Waco Street. It was a target of opportunity, a vehicle happened to be sitting there with some things and people just yelped themselves to it. And then also with the nicer weather, the parks will be getting, be getting busy again, so by all means, if there's issues going on at the parks, you know, the Twin Lakes Park gets busy in the summer and sometimes we have people there doing things they shouldn't be. We like to try to get those things early in the year so it doesn't establish a pattern for people come here to try to cause problems. We don't want them thinking they can do it all summer. We like to kind of get those things taken care of early in the summer and let people know that these are places for people and families to recognize and not have to worry about some of the things that tend to happen when people get out of control. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anything from the council? Thank you, Lieutenant.
Absolutely.
Four items. Right on time. Mr. Dan Williams.
7967, 29th Lane. I just, it was brought to my attention by two residents that there's no park signage for parks, and I thought it would be nice that we have a sign that would show that, you know, like up here, ice rink, playground, information, like marker, somewhere on the intersection here and down Twin Lakes, a sign that said beach, playground, you know, well, there are many there, so the people that are driving through have some idea of what's going on in these two locales. And I'd like to know, what's the best way to get this in gear? Should it go through Parker Rec or City Council or Roden Bridge? I'm kind of looking for information here. I know I talked to the mayor Saturday and he thought the State Department put those up, so I'm looking for some direction here to get this going. Thank you.
All right, planning and zoning. Sheldon McCoy subdivision, re-subdivision.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I move that we approve the re-subdivision of 933-195th and 9228-195th to redefine the parcel boundaries that separate them from their neighbors to the east and east and corrects the error from 2002 and the 9300 property, 9300-195th property was purchased.
Motion to second. Discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Code enforcement, do we need anything in particular there? We kind of beat these up at the workshop, at the council's conclusion after the discussion at the workshop, that we explained to Mr. Anderson what he needed to know as far as the criteria for his property. Anybody think we need to say anything more about that or formalize that? We've got that in staff's hands, and Mr. Hallison was really an update for us, and I think it's a misunderstanding on his part. Anything else on item B?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I just, I listened to the tape again, and I just want to reaffirm that I have not overstepped my bounds in any, in any manner in regards to this gentleman's property. I, again, when the council discussed it in 2015, we all discussed it. I made the motion that, to waive the charges that were going to be assessed to him. Councilmember Rickert seconded that. As far as since then, again, I had one phone call that I made to the sheriff, to the fire chief based on a complaint that I got from a resident in regards to three large, or two, I think it was two at the time, but three, no, three large burning piles that they were concerned on. And again, I don't believe I overstepped any bounds in that I just did what was required of a council member.
Has he contacted you at all regarding the misunderstanding?
No, he has not. And I will be contacting the sheriff's office to confirm that I have not done anything. I don't know what contact he's had with who, but I will contact Lieutenant Heath and give my side of the story.
All right. I'm for maintenance department.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I make a motion for, to approve, to approve the request for bids to replace the culverts and in place as needed. I would also add to that if we can rent the equipment and do the work cheaper, that that be, that option be pursued.
All right.
I'll second that.
Motion to second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I'm going to make a motion after this is talked about in regards to going forward for replacement of repairs, replacement and/or repairs of culverts, that that be included in our budgeting process.
All right. Anything on this particular, so this is a request for bids, so we'll see those before we grant them. The other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
In relationship to culverts, I move that starting with the 2017 budget process, which is fiscal year 2018, that the council directs the maintenance supervisor to each year as part of the budgeting process, provide a list of culverts expected to be replaced during the following year and the estimates to do so.
I'll second for discussion.
All right. Motion to the second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
My purpose for doing this is so that we, we can have an idea going forward, what our maintenance, maintenance costs are going to be. You know, here are five or six culverts that need to be replaced this year, and I think going forward, we need to have an idea of that. I know Councilmember Bettinger also asked to get the heights, the elevations, I'm not sure the correct terminology, of them, that that's going to be something that we need going forward. But I think it's important that the council has that information at hand when we are dealing with the next year's budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I don't have any issue, you know, trying to create a new line item for culverts, but again, as you, by the request for council action, this is something that doesn't pop up until spring, so how do we know, you know, budgeting time obviously isn't spring, so how do we know what to budget for if the issue pops up in spring and we don't know what culverts may or may not need to be replaced at that time? Do we come up with an average, you know, we want to, and, you know, but then we try to shave other areas, so it's, I don't mind creating a separate line item, but it's just how do we go about doing it? Because again, we really don't know what's going to be replaced until springtime and what gets backed up or, so it's kind of a fine line there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
To Councilmember Rickert's comments, I, I would think that if we, if maintenance staff watches them from this year to next year, I think they can tell that they're deteriorating. I mean, you can see that they're deteriorating, they're getting blocked up, and just put those on a list of ones that could possibly be, need to be repaired. It's just, it's a ongoing maintenance that needs to be watched and then budgeted for.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Yeah, I'd agree. I mean, we, we're not going to know exact, but it wouldn't hurt to budget in there. And without having the budget in front of me, there's something budgeted for maintenance that either can be included in that or had a separate line item for it.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Yeah, I agree with Paul, and we have the same thing at the county. I mean, they do the inspection every spring and they, and so they do, spring of 2017, they do the inspections. They know they're going to have to replace some pipes, but based off that inspection in the spring, they decide what's when they could do, the summer of 2017. You may not know, like as Paul said, come spring, the high waters, all the rain, the snow melts up, some of these pipes finally blow out and give away, and that's, you know, that's part of it. We should always plan that we're going to probably have some replaced, and Joe typically has done it in the past, and he's done it with our own city labors. Now, you know, we let one full-time person go here, what, a year and a half or so ago, and now Steve's not coming back, so that's part of the issue here. He doesn't have probably enough people, and he mentioned the other night, he tried to hint at all that, you know, they just don't have enough people to provide all the labor to do it themselves probably anymore. So there's really only two guys.
Yeah, we, we didn't know at the time Steve wasn't coming back, but, but no, that certainly is one of the considerations, I think. It's, there's wisdom in, in having something in the budget for replacing it, and, you know, worst case, it's going to be, we have to hire it out, and we planned for that, and probably the county, you probably anticipate X number of culverts, you just don't know which ones. So you budget for replacement of a certain amount, and then you find out which ones are worse come spring. At least there's something in the budget.
Yeah, well, we do have, well, we have stuff in the budget too. We have, we have been in the budget for buying culverts, and typically, we would replace them ourselves, so we, we went, he would have been here asking for this if we had our enough people to provide the labor to do this work, I believe. So I think that's the issue that, you know, and something maybe we want to discuss and look at is with being Steve's not coming back. We did cut one person, so do we want to look at maybe putting that third person back on our labor force here? Is there a need for it? There probably is, but I think that's something we need to look at and have some discussion on. You know, we were lucky to have Steve for all them years, but now he's, he's gone.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, dust control bid.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Make a motion to approve the bid for Northern Salt for the dust control for this season.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I know I've said this many times, but I'm disappointed in the process we used. Joe, our maintenance supervisor, stated at a Roden Bridge meeting, he was going to present this to the council, let the council decide if they were in agreement with the locations he is suggesting, and then go out for bid, and instead just went out for bid, and I, I believe the council should have had a discussion on it, and I also believe that we should have closed bids for this. I think that's the fairest way to do it for both the residents, as far as getting fair value for the dollar, and the contractors that are bidding the work.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
To Councilmember Rainville, I guess, I'm, I'm kind of a little lost as far as what you're asking of Joe to bring to us as far as what road need, roads need to be dust controlled. I don't know what roads need to be, so by him coming to us and saying, road XYZ 1, 2, 3 need to be dust controlled, or this, I wouldn't have a clue. That's why we, we have him in the position that he's in, and we, you know, trust him to make the decisions, and he's, you know, concerned and worried about, you know, keeping within budget. I don't see any issues with him coming to us with, okay, this is the roads that I think need to be done this year and presented in the way that was.
Mr. Mayor.
Because again, I don't think, I, I wouldn't have a clue on which roads do and do not need.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I guess I just, in looking back at what Joe had said he was going to do, which was to bring them to council, that isn't, that wasn't done, and I think that should have been done, and, and again, I, I think that we would get a better price if we went with closed bids.
Anything else from the council? Seeing and hearing none. The motion to approve the dust control bid was presented. Northern Salt Incorporated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would also, as far as dust control, I, I would like to direct, ask council to direct staff to make sure that the roads are properly prepared for the dust control. I've already talked to one resident that lives on a road that we've gravelled, and it, it, that roads are prepared properly for dust control and prior to gravelling. I've talked to one resident on a road that was gravelled, and there was no grading to that road prior to, so I, I don't know what effect gravelling will have in the long run if we're not properly preparing the roads.
Was it gravel or dust control?
Well, this one was a gravel, but I would like to make sure that both for gravelling and dust control, that roads are properly prepared prior to either of those being placed.
Mr. Mayor.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, we need a second. I'll second it so we can hear Paul speak.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Does anyone of us know what's properly prepared? Would you know if, if a road is properly prepared for dust control or gravelling?
I believe I have a decent idea, yes, and that it's graded, that the, the issues that are currently there, the holes, divots are fixed, because if those aren't done, then placing dust control doesn't do anything. Oh, it doesn't keep the dust down. It doesn't help with the, with the, this poor surface. And with gravel, if all you're doing is putting gravel over a hole, it's just going to fall into the hole, and you're not going to have a level surface after a while.
If the gravel falls into the hole, doesn't that fill the hole?
Not really, because you've taken a hole, you've filled it with gravel, but you still have this gravel over here that hasn't gone into the hole.
Again, I don't think, none of us are experts on, on what it would take, and, and I'm not saying that, you know, they should be prepared properly, yes, of course they should, but I don't think any one of us on this council, Randy may have a much better idea than any of the rest of us, but I couldn't tell you if, if, and I, I can't imagine that you could tell me either, but I could be wrong, that we know exactly how the roads should be prepared. Should they be prepared beforehand? Yes, but who's to say they are, who's to say they aren't? Is a resident an expert? Probably not. You know, and again, I'm not saying that they shouldn't be, but if you're making a motion that they should be, who's the judge of what they should be?
Let me, let me ask this, maybe council member would reconsider her motion to have Joe define what proper preparation is, so that that way, there's an agreement of what it is, and whether he's doing it or Eric or seasonal help or an additional body, there's some consistency because of Joe's defined it. So if he would tell us what he believes is proper preparation before dust control or proper preparation for gravelling, then we have something to go back on. So if he would consider that to your motion, say that have Joe define that, so then there's something that, that he can hold his team accountable to.
And that would be fine, and I would ask that, that using industry standards, and if you Google that, you'll find quite a bit of information as to what should be done to roads prior to either gravel or dust control being applied, so.
And I, and I would think certainly that's our responsibility to, as Joe presents a plan, say, yeah, what we've seen in research, that looks consistent. But I think if Joe presents it and prepares it, we certainly have something to go on.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I, I agree with that, and in that way, we can tell the residents, this is what our standards are, you know, and go with that. As far as researching on the internet, anybody can post anything on their internet, so.
Since, since when?
And who knows what's true, and if you believe everything on the internet, then...
What do you mean, it's not true?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
To Councilmember Rickert, I, when I look on the internet, I go to reliable surface, reliable sources, so M dot, you know, universities that have done studies. I'm not looking at Joe Schmo's report. And, and the resident that has contacted me is somebody that is in the industry, and so I, I, I have faith in what they told me.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
The only thing I say about, you, you say you go to university studies. I don't rely on any of those typically, because this week, this university proved out, and this is their theory, and this is what they believe, two years later, University B goes out and does a study, and their findings are 180 degrees from what the other one is. So I don't, don't ever, ever put stocks fully in a university study.
The league does have some good references to some of the state criteria and the state training, so again, I think it's incumbent on Joe to justify what he's doing and go from there, and, you know, he, he knows what he's been doing for 20 years, so he can tell us what he's been doing and, and why he believes it's effective, and we take it from there.
Well, like I said, if we have that standard, then we, that's what we can tell the residents the standard is.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I've been out on some of the roads when he's prepped them for the dust control and stuff. Sure, he knows what he's doing. Now, the gravelling, yeah, typically, when you have a lot of trucks come in, yeah, you come in, you blade it, you cut them, potholes out, or not potholes, or the, the washboards, you cut them out and stuff, yeah, that's a good idea, but the way we haul gravel, he, he can't be out and grade that road every day before Eric dumps seven or eight loads. He may grade it on Monday, and he may haul all week. The grader can't, it just would be cost effective for him to sit out there to keep it graded up, so it's smooth like a table before you dump the gravel, so he, he does a fine job. He's been, he's been doing it for 20 some years, he knows what he's doing, I trust him.
Let's not beat it up anymore. Let's, let's let Joe present, because we believe Joe is doing a good job. He can present what he's doing, and it's consistent, the residents know what, what to expect. So the motion is amended to have Joe present his preparation plans.
Yes.
And criteria. All right. With that, and, is the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, replace storage garage roof.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Make a motion to replace the roof with metal panels for $4,500 per the diversified metal roofing company, including any additional repairs for the roof decking, and have that come out of the park capital fund.
I'll second that.
Motion to second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
So what do we want for color? Could be, and I would imagine probably something similar to the pavilion.
What color's the pavilion?
It's blue, I think. It's, it's a dark blue.
I was thinking of gray, just to kind of blend in down there.
For the siding in the garage, it's blue. It's a light blue, ain't it?
Light, really light.
I just think it's something to, anything so it doesn't quite stand out down there.
That's what I thought, if you tried to simulate the...
That's what I thought, if you tried to simulate the pavilion, it'd be somewhat...
Looks like a match set.
I don't know. If you can.
I guess I don't have the color, my color wheel in front of me as far as what the options are. There's a lot.
Nope, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I would prefer a gray, I think that, that complements a blue. I think a blue is, I don't know, I think a gray would look better.
Can we, can we bring on gray then? The best looking gray. I don't really recall what's on the pavilion.
Mr. Mayor.
Can I have a look over?
Most park buildings are brown, brown roofing, but at all, when we built the pavilion, Kenny was, had, was dead set on blue, so that's why that's blue, that's why the garage's blue.
I would guess it's gonna be painted before it's gonna be roofed again.
Yeah.
Deciding.
I hope so.
I'm sure spinal, yeah, it could be replaced.
Oh, did he lose him?
Thank you, man. Yeah, you know, Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd like to see us stay somewhat consistent, otherwise we have this color here, we have a brown one here, we have a, you know...
So what is it, Troy?
The pavilion is silver with a blue trim.
All right, so let's match the pavilion, so there's consistency. All right?
I think it looks better, rather than having a large pad.
If you got a blue trim, it'll match the blue siding as long as blue siding is there. All right, so $4,500 for the 29 gauge Pro Panel Exposed Fastener Ag Panel, silver with blue trim to match the pavilion. It's the motion, any other discussion? Standing in hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Troy.
Consent agenda, two items removed. Rest of the items?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I would move the consent agenda as printed minus the 1.5 and 1.6.
Second.
All right, motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, City Hall HVAC council items.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
Motion to approve proposal 3223260 from Air Comfort Heating and Air Conditioning to replace both furnaces and existing air conditioner at City Hall, as well as add additional air conditioner for building addition.
Second, Seth.
Motion is second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
We require everything else that we do to have multiple bids, technically, we have one bid. And I know that we have had others look at it, but we've never presented a complete picture of what we want to do. We have that picture of what we want to do, and I think we should get, and if Mary wants to have them sealed bids, we can do sealed bids, but I think we need more than one bid. I did talk to, I tried to get ahold of a friend of mine who owns a heating company, I couldn't, so I actually called the gentleman who did the heater and the fire station, and he, he basically recommended Bryant, Trane, or Lennox are your top three brands.
Other discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I agree with Paul, and I think there's no rush on this right now, we got plenty of time to look at this, and both furnaces are still working, they work, air conditioner works, there's nothing broke, not working, so there's no urgencies to replace something right here today. And we still haven't, I'd still like to find out how we're gonna fund this, or we could budget it next year. I hate spending money that wasn't budgeted, I mean, that's how you start buying things out of sequence, whether it's a road grader, fire truck, whatever, it's better to have them things budgeted, have to, have the cash in the bank and pay for it as planned. If it was broke down and not working, then, then to me, more, then it's, that's more of an emergency, but right now, this is not an emergency to replace either furnace or air conditioner.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Just kind of to go off of what I, what I had said earlier was, you know, we had, we had gotten a few rough bids and some options of possibilities. We, we didn't really know what we wanted to do or what needed to be done at that time, so we really didn't have, and I don't think you could call those bids, but based on the information, if you compared the one bid we have now to another company that was selling the same brand of equipment, this was, you know, with air conditioner alone, was, if I remember, close to $3,500, if not more, for the same efficient furnace. I know we tried to contact that other company, he didn't contact us back, but again, there's $3,500 that we're just willing to throw out there because we have the one bid, again, the need for additional bids.
I'll say that, you know, we did certainly attempt, that's why we engaged Andy's services to try and, we got four people that, that put in bids, I think, you know, only one of them showed up to actually look at what he was bidding on. And, and I, I think it's unfortunate at this point, I, I think probably to Mary's point, that if we had sealed bids, he's done a lot of work and everything's laid out here in a public fashion, it'd be pretty easy to undercut, you know, what he's got, that's, that's one of the problems with information getting out before everybody's put in their bids at the same time. But I do think there's something to be said, you know, in, in the bidding process, that even if all things were the same, and all the people bothered to come out here and research it and, and size it the way that this fellow did, we're not obligated to take the lowest because we're looking at, at the, the best package for the city. So we're looking at service along with quality equipment and, and quality price. And I think that, that one of the advantages of having Air Comfort is they, you know, the family's been in town for generations, they live in town, they have 24/7 service, and, and they're warranting their work, they're sizing it, I think that they have done Yeoman's job, we've been at this for about five months, and certainly it's been known, we've been looking for this, and while now that summer's coming along and the air conditioning's more concerned than heat, I do think that this, this fellow's put in the work, part of the price difference is the, the filter package, the duct cleaning and some of those things in addition, so it's not a straight train-for-train equipment, there's, there's additional things that the other fellow didn't quote, so. It is unfortunate, as many times as I got ahold of him, he wouldn't respond to a call, and that, again, concerns me. Anytime that, that Mr. Hazeman was called, he immediately got back to us, met us here at our convenience, and, and I think the four bids we have, and the five months we've looked at it, it's, and, and the fact that he's now done all the work, that somebody else can just pick up the public record and say, I can beat that by $100, puts us in the same spot, we have to decide which is the best company along with the best equipment and the best dollars, so. I do think in our, in a workshop discussion, there was money from non-budgeted items that, that remain in our, our savings account, our checking account, that, that are reasonable to use for this, and I think it's a reasonable thing to do at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I don't recall us talking about this for five months, but, so I think that's a stretch.
We started this process in December.
But we, again, and I don't think, we had four people kind of look at it, but none of those four people, we decided on doing both furnaces, we kind of, we're asking opinions, you know, and whatnot, so we didn't specify at any point what we specifically wanted somebody to bid on, other than Air Comfort did, you know, we, somehow we got pigeonholed into gearing that direction. It's our fault that this is out public notice, if we would've took and done our due diligence and actually done what we require on everything else and got three actual bids, this wouldn't be out here for everybody else to see right now. So that's nobody's fault but our own. But again, if you're willing to go out and, and based on the rough guestimates that we saw based on that spreadsheet that Andy had put together, we saw right based on that, another train dealer was $3,500 left, less on that equipment, if you looked at furnace to furnace and AC to AC, you're willing to throw away just $3,500. How, how do you explain to the taxpayers that you want to just arbitrarily give it to the one bid we have, and you got somebody else out there at, in the beginning, who isn't quoting exactly what he's quoting because we have not asked anybody else to quote these specifics, that you want to just throw that $3,500 bucks to him?
Well, I, I disagree that it's throwing it away, it's, first of all, I don't think it's exactly $3,500 bucks, use that number, but again, we are getting additional, in addition to the air conditioners and the furnaces, we are getting additional services, we're getting, we're getting lines moved. And actually, the, the one that was, was targeted was the other train dealer, that's the one that Andy had worked with before, and he'd come out here and done something for us before. So we really expected him to come back, but those were bids, I mean, Andy went out and got four bids, and it was, it was to tell us what we needed. And we spent time trying to figure out if we could do one or two, but we have to have two because of the firewall for the structural wall there. So the, the discussion with them was to come out here and tell us what we needed. And, and in, of the four, only one actually came out and investigated and told us what we needed. Now, we did try to get the two train dealers to compete with each other, but to this day, I don't think, unless the city's had any calls, that we've got any response to our multiple calls to that person, so. We do have four bids, they, I think that probably only one person took it to the point of thoroughness that, that this contractor did, but we did open it up, we did have our building inspector contact multiple people, a number of other people, some even here in town declined a bid, they were called and, and told of the bidding process and declined. Four people put in bids, and, and at this point, the best package appears to be this one.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I disagree with you 100% as far as we have four bids, we not, and Councilman Ringo has hammered us to this to no end, where if we go to a bid, we need to have a detailed bid sheet. Do we have a detailed bid sheet on exactly what we want and what our expectations are? No, we not, never have done that. Andy had went and worked with individuals to see what their thoughts were, is what we needed to do, we, do, do we need to replace one now, do we replace them both now, do we need to do an AC now, do we need an AC for the, so we've never once sent out a bid sheet to multiple suppliers of our expectations and a detailed bid sheet. So if you're saying we have, I disagree with you 100%. So the bids, four bids or four guestimates that we saw on that spreadsheet, in my opinion, were not bids. And if you want to say they are, I disagree 100%. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
Call the vote. Yes, I like to, Mr. Mayor, I like to say just a little bit, if I could, please.
We gotta call the motion already, so. I will call the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's all it's gonna be.
Yeah, thanks for letting me discuss it.
You can explain to the taxpayers why you used to $3,500 up the doors.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
Letter B, under council items, the farmer's market budgeting changes, I did submit an amended request for council action based on the conversation we had, so on that, we, I included number five and six, which was the discussion on allowing items to be purchased by the, via the city employees on the city's credit card, and that the market manager is responsible providing in a timely manner a detailed description of required product, including pictures, website documents. And then also, one of the things that I forgot to mention on, when I talked about the credit card, is also that, to allow items to be billed to the city versus the reimbursing process, such as like advertising in the safe, the safe ads of courier, that they would just bill the city for that, and then that the marketing, marketing manager would inform the city clerk of the purchase and provide documentation as necessary. So I would move that request for council action.
All right, I'll second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
You know, per, per the attorney's email and what we saw, he does definitely say this is a city event. I guess all I ask is, you know, we make all other committees, you know, have meetings and whatnot, can we ask them to have, say, one annual meeting in the spring so that us as a council know kind of what their plans are? You know, I'm not saying they need to have a monthly meeting, a quarterly meeting, you know, just a public meeting so that the public is aware of what's going on because funds are cycling through the city. I, I don't think one meeting a year is asking too much.
And actually, they, they did, it was a week ago Thursday, the 27th.
But again, I think that should follow all our other guidelines as far as publicly noticed and note, or minutes taken.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know what about the minutes, but it's, it was posted on the, the sign, it was posted on the corner, I don't know if it was posted in the city offices, there's a website, but it certainly was posted for weeks. And I would've been there, but that was Fire Protection Council night, so conflicted. I would've gone just to see what they were doing at that meeting, but I think it's a good idea they do that anyway, so I certainly think it's encouraged, we can encourage them to make sure that they're coordinating that through the corner. Any other discussion? Standing in hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And porta potty.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Just giving us a little bit of thought after we had discussed it the other day, and I know you had made the comment that, and we had gotten pricing on a handicap size unit. You know, thinking about it realistically, the facilities that we currently have right now are handicap accessible, you know, so we are covered from that aspect, and due to the cost of what a handicap size porta potty costs, I think we could get by with, you know, a standard size, I know the one we had up by the ice rink this winter was, was decent size, you know, you could get in there with a, with your stuff on, with a child to help them and whatnot. And again, I would propose that this is something that the city provides, and we have it year round, because we could have it over here at the field and move it to ice area when we needed to in winter. Do we have a motion yet? Sorry, I make a motion that the city get a regular size porta potty and place it over here by the fields. Corey, was Joe gonna find out where we could put it, where they could re, or?
I checked with Grant Radebacher, and he has no concerns at all using his property, says even if you want to put it on his property, he said, we don't, because you're on the other side of the fence, but, but with their 30-foot hose, you can put it right outside where the two gates are, the one that goes behind the outfield fence and the one that goes into the outfield. It sounded like she wanted it back in that corner because that's where the little kids are, and so a 30-foot hose would reach from his parking lot to that location, just south of the basketball court. So against, against the fence, I think, would be a reasonable spot, and Mr. Radebacher says he would be more than happy to allow access from his properties.
So, Mr. Mayor, with that said, then, I would like to make a motion to, for the city to provide a regular-sized porta potty and add it to the one we already have for the recycle center, that we keep year-round, and we move it from the field to ice surface in the winter.
Second. Motion is second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I'm not in favor of the city purchasing a porta potty for... purchasing a porta potty for a twelve-month period. The church has asked to do it, offered to do it for two months out of the year to facilitate the ability of the kids that they're serving to use the bathroom closer to the, to the area that they're at. No other organization has come up to say that that's an issue. I think it's appropriate that, that Now Then Alliance Church assumes that responsibility. I know that Councilmember Rickert would like to keep that, then we can use it at the ice rink in the winter. So you've got two months for their events, the June and July, two to, max three months for an ice rink. And, and some of the reading that I've been doing, the ice rink needs an ADA accessible bathroom. There are no other bathrooms available, and it needs to be ADA accessible. Whether or not anyone comes up there that has the need for an ADA is not the issue, it's the fact that that's a requirement. The city's going to provide something that needs to be ADA accessible. So we're looking at spending money on something that is going to have limited use, and something that the Now Then Alliance Church has already offered to do to service the children that are using and participating in their event.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Do you honestly think that if we had a porta potty sitting there, that parents of children and children and whatnot would not use that if they were playing on the playground, rather than having to go around the front of the pavilion over there and into the floor? So I, I don't see it being as, as limited use. I, I would say if there was one sitting there, it'd be, it'd get used all the time. And again, it's, it's a pain, and I know you don't have kids, but to sit at the playground and have them play on the playground and them have to, if they want to go to use the restroom for you, have to walk all the way around. At least I don't feel safe on letting them go themselves, so it'd be nice to have something that was in, actually in visual sight. If we so, if the church is willing to pay for it two, for two months, do we, do we get one for a year and let them pay for two months of the twelve? But again, I think there is an advantage of having one there year-round, where we could put them in two different locations.
Corey, do you know when we shut down the plumbing in the pavilion?
Around October.
And so the earliest we'd be using it in the ice rink would probably be December.
Depends on the winter.
Depends on the winter, but typically, you know, when they plan on freezing rinks, it's, it's probably early December would be a good year. You know, you could, could move it over at Thanksgiving time, but, but the, the point being is if we shut down the, the pavilion at the beginning of October, you've got two months there where there is a, a facility available to people using the playground. They continue to use the playground into the fall.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettner.
We've had complaints in the past because in the spring and in the fall when the pavilion is locked up because of the freezing temperatures, there's people still using the fields out here, and they have no restroom to use, so it would be nice to have it out there for a longer period of time, and I don't see any problem with the city providing that service to our, to our public.
I think, you know, it certainly seems reasonable to give it a try, and if there's problems, we address that as they come forward, but it's, I think it certainly would be used from here on out throughout the year, and take a look after you've given it, given it a try, so.
Mr. Mayor. In light of what Councilmember Ringo said, we could, since we're going to have to have them move it anyways, maybe when they're going to move it to the ice skating rink area, is that's when we have them switch it out to a handicap one? As opposed to, you know, I, I think that would be, I think they could do that, I don't know that there's a.
We're on the route, and they're already coming to a recycling building anyway, so.
Right.
I don't see it as a problem, so.
Yeah, because we could save. It's what, almost what, fifty, sixty dollars more for the handicap access.
I was reading some of the same stuff, though. If that's the only facility open, we still have to have it even if it's not heavily used. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
So I'm trying to visualize this. If it's sitting in the outfield.
Would be outside the fence.
Well, outside the fence. When, when someone at the park's trying to use it, they're going to have to go across the softball field to get it when the pavilion's not open.
Well, then I could have to go, it's going to be on near the volleyball courts. So they would have to, instead of going up to a locked pavilion, yes, they'd have to go down to the other side of the playground to use it, but. So no, there would be something to be used, though. It's in the corner.
So then when the pavilion gets shut down, until the pavilion is opened in the spring, it would be over here by the, where, wherever the proposed hockey rink will be?
Yes.
Once freeze. So say if the, if we shut the pavilion down in October, and it's nice enough November, it stays there until everything freezes up and whatnot, and then it gets moved once the ice rink is.
Like, once, once you've got enough cold weather for ice, you're, you're having a lot, lot less usage over here, and at that point, if they need something, they can see it's over here by the hockey rink, or wherever the hockey rink ends up. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, if there are no introduction to new items, I move to adjourn.
Second, moving adjourned. Close. Eight fifty-five, seven fifty-five. Soon as I put it in, it's going to leave a bit. Corey? Is that warming house locked? Is the warming house locked?
Yes.
Started thinking about that the other day, but it seemed like turning into a clubhouse or something.
You already have a good.
Okay.